Margaret Peabody. Yeah, we'll look for both of them. Nancy Claiberg.
Here.
Hope Van Eppes.
Here.
Brian French.
Here.
Carrie Nelti. Danielle Miles, teacher rep, who's going to join us. She said she's going to join us late. She's over at Lister. Nick Dolan, student rep. Great.
Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Zach, we'll hand it over to you to make the introduction.
Sure.
We all know.
So, well, I'll do that in just a moment. I'll just tell you that at your tables, you have a very simple agenda for tonight. We also included, we received some, I had shared that Google Doc where people give us specific questions that we can follow up on. So, we received some. Several of those were in relation to IT-related questions, which Tom will, in part of his conversation, will either refer to, or you can follow up with Tom about it. And then, there were a couple of questions that were not directly IT-related, and I just include, included some feedback from a couple of staff members around those questions. So, and then I'll roll into Tom. So, so tonight, when we set out originally, we were trying to discuss in the workshop sessions, without initial feedback from the board, what, you know, what should we spend some time talking about? And we kind of worked through the three presentations we initially set up for you with the idea that, based on board feedback, we'd provide you additional stuff that you would want to talk about. But we thought it was smart to at least set the table with some initial conversations. That included the two kind of presentations that were scheduled to be upcoming, which is Tom Lots, our network administrator, talking about IT and sort of what is happening in the IT budget. And then we're going to have, initially, we had given you the proposal to have Jeanette Souther, the Director of People's Services, come in. But I think what we heard, and I think that both Nancy and Margo heard and I heard, was the board didn't feel there was a need for that to occur. And I know that some of the initial conversation we've had is about focusing our next work session very specifically on esker positions and conversations about those esker positions. And we are prepping around our next session, talking, spending the bulk of the time talking about those esker positions unless we get additional feedback from you. So, just a heads up in terms of context.
Glad you heard us.
Yeah. It was pretty clear. And I wasn't the only one listening. Nancy was too, and so was Margo. So, I'll turn it over to Tom Lots, our network administrator, to talk through a little bit about what's happening inside of the IT budget.
Thank you. There we go. Okay, so, I'm here. Tom Lots, I'm the network administrator, IT manager for the district. And just to give you guys an update on what's happening in the technology, with technology in Portsmouth schools, I decided to keep this very brief with a slideshow so you could leave plenty of time for everybody's questions from here. So, just to talk about a couple of projects that we have, we've been working on, and some upcoming projects. So, a couple of the things that we've been doing is, we implemented a single sign-on, or SSO, for all staff and students this year. In order to kind of simplify things for folks, we combined the Microsoft login with a Google login. So, Microsoft feeds Google, Google feeds Infinite Campus, and the rest of the world, so to speak. We can actually leverage the Google login for multiple things online as well. Oop, can't hear. This microphone is on, right? Should be. All right. Can you hear me now? Maybe I'm not close enough to the microphone. Let's move that in a little bit.
Great.
Yes.
There you go, okay.
And Liz, could you originally hear the introductory conversation before Tom?
No, I didn't.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, going back, so, IT projects that we've been working on. So, we've been working on this single sign-on, SSO, for staff and students. And the idea is that the Microsoft account feeds the Google account, the Google account feeds Infinite Campus, and the Google account can feed a number of other things. So, the idea is that for staff and students, they have one username and password that's unified across the board. So, they have an email address, they have a password that's associated with that. They can then use that for logging into their device, logging into wireless when they need to log into wireless, log into Infinite Campus, et cetera, et cetera. Their email, everything is tied back to that. So, we had some great success with this overall. We ran into a bit of a stumble at the elementary level with some of the students who were a little bit too young to be able to, you know, basically not being able to type and learn their, everything in order to spell it and fill it all out. That's okay. We rolled back a little bit to make it easier for those folks. But by and large, we were able to successfully move forward, and we've, we had a great conversation on that and decided that, you know, really, we want to be able to implement this, continue to have this in place for our middle school on up, and of course, all the staff, just to make life easier for folks. One of the other things we've done here in the background, so we're making more use of our Microsoft Azure AD, which ties into the single sign-on. But also, we're making better use of our device management through Microsoft. So, we're actually able to, to take all of the middle school devices that we deployed this year, as well as some of the high school devices that we were deploying last year, and really make them more easily managed, make it a lot easier for people to add a stack of software that we have already prepackaged, and, you know, they can draw it down to their, to their laptops and things like that. We had an opportunity to actually upgrade our firewall this year, which was kind of unexpected, because SonicWall is the version of the firewall that we have, and it was time for us to renew our software support and all that sort of thing on it. And they actually came to us and said, "Well, hey, we've got a deal for you. We'll actually upgrade your whole firewall for the same cost as it was going to be to upgrade this off, or to just continue on our support." So, we rushed that one through over the summer and put a new firewall in place. It's faster and better response time and all that sort of thing. This year, we, we had a major refresh of the Canon copiers. We actually have almost all-new devices. There were a handful of them that were really pretty low-volume that we held on to. But we were able to get actually more color devices out to different areas. We were able to reassess what we had, consolidate down to just the, for the most part, the copier class devices with the more heavy-duty ones, which actually are, give us a better cost per page and better quality. And we were also able to move to a, you know, to a newer version of the Uniflow software that we use. I think the copiers have been great. The Uniflow, we're still struggling a little bit with a few things, working with Canon on that. There are some background issues that we're working on. One of the other things we've, we've kind of made available, so I'm going to call this a, the beginning of a major project, but we're actually talking to folks about consolidating at the staff level where they're saving all of their files, because we have disparate locations as far as where files are saved. Some, some files are saved on Google, some files are saved on Microsoft file servers. We have files in other areas, too. And what we wanted to do is really kind of make it easier for people to have a location to save files, but also make it easier for transitions. We really noticed as, we've had a lot of transitions this year and everything, it's been very difficult for the new folks to come in and be able to sort through where everything is, you know? "Okay, you left me a pile of stuff. Is it here? Is it there? Is it, where is it?" So, we've set up a, a structure, a shared file structure in Google to allow folks to have a place to put all of those files that they're going to share, you know, with, amongst different staff members, but also to have them available for the next person to come in and take over. I will say that this is going to be a long-term project, because we have built a structure. Now, we have to start using it, get people used to where this is, work out the different idiosyncrasies that we're going to run into with all of this, and then eventually get to the point where we have everything in a new location, stored, backed up, and all that sort of thing. So, this will be definitely an ongoing project. We have a couple of things coming up here. So, one of the things we're moving into is actually implementing, or expanding, I guess, on our frontline products. We're expanding into, working with the central office folks, primarily on this one, to expand into recruiting and hiring module and frontline central module. And the idea with this is that it will be using this to streamline our recruiting and hiring process, have a checklist process that we go through with everybody, make it a lot easier for everybody, and then have all that information feed into frontline central as a, as a database that we can have our staff data easily accessible. So, we are assisting central office with this. We're not running the show on it, but as with anything that requires data, IT and our database folks definitely jump in and help. And we're hoping to leverage this for, you know, as we learn more and more about it, we're hoping to leverage it for other things as well. We're, similar to what I was talking about earlier with Microsoft, we're expanding, we use Mosul as a MDM, that's a device manager, mobile device manager is what MDM stands for. But we're expanding our use of that. Because we're actually moving towards this upcoming year, we're going to be doing a refresh of the MacBooks at the elementary level. So, we're actually going to rework the process of how we manage those and make it a lot, you know, easier for us to manage it, for the teachers to be able to, hey, say, "Hey, I got a problem with my MacBook. Can I bring it to you? We can bring, we can take it, get him hooked up with another one." And a lot easier with a new, with this new MDM process. And then also, well, like I said, our Google shares for data migration, this is going to be an ongoing project. It's going to take several years probably before we get to the point where we're really comfortable. We have a couple of database projects we've been working on. So, Infinite Campus Payments, which is, allows us to actually take credit card payments for various things. We've, we're working on an initial launch for that. We piloted it with actually a, I think, the high school, whatever it was, calendar sales or raffle or something like that, as a fundraiser type of a thing. We piloted it with that, because it was a simple thing to get started with. So far, that was successful. We learned some things behind the scenes that we'll need to do as we expand it to other areas. But the goal is to actually be able to take payments for multiple things with credit cards, and hopefully move us further and further away from having to take cash and checks and all that sort of thing. We, where the database is concerned, Infinite Campus, we did onboard and trained 16 clericals and administrators this year, which is, I was talking to Mike Parr about that. He does all the training for all of this sort of thing. And it's, it's not easy to learn how to do everything that you need to do in Infinite Campus. And he was just commenting, that's actually, believe it or not, that's probably the most turnover we've had in clericals and administrators in probably at least a decade or more, so. New and exciting times, right?
It's a good positive frame, Tom. Thank you.
So.
It's hectic, and we have to clean up their mess all the time.
No, new and exciting, new and exciting. We also revamped the high school custom transcript this year. There were a couple of cosmetic changes and a couple of changes that needed to be made for the, what was displayed on it and the data on it. We also have been working with integrating, which is a constant battle, integrating the Infinite Campus data with parent squares to feed the correct information into parent squares, so that all those notices that go out to, to folks for snow days and emergencies and, and, you know, high school messages and all that sort of thing are all correct and getting to the right location. Upcoming, we're going to expand, like I said, on the IC payments, Infinite Campus payments, to get that into other areas. We're also looking at, yes?
So, just going to say, just in case, and I know most people are, you know, who have kids in the district know what Infinite Campus is, but the primary function of Infinite Campus is, for those who don't know.
Okay, sorry, yes. Infinite Campus is our student information system. So, all of our student data resides there, all demographic data, grades, classes, what their schedule is, the transcript, anything and everything student-related resides in that, in Infinite Campus as a student information system.
Thank you.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely. So, Infinite Campus Attendance Tracker is actually a, something that we're trying to implement at the high school in particular. It will allow students, especially like late arrivals, to be able to basically scan, scan in as a late arrival, to let folks know that, yes, I'm here, and hopefully speed up the process of actually getting them checked in and to the class. And we're going to test it first with arrivals. It has the capability to also be able to do a scan on the way out. You know, you've got a doctor's appointment, and you're leaving at such and such a time, and the great office already knows, be able to scan your card and say, "Yes, I'm leaving, and here's why." There, there's a limited subset of what a student can select as reasons why they're, why they're leaving. But it's a, it should speed up the process. We're also looking to implement some Infinite Campus events and actions. Now, this is a, this is a powerful tool behind the scenes, and we don't, we're not even sure how all we're going to be able to use it. It's, it's still fresh. But it allows, it allows triggers to be set for data events. So, if something changes, we can send out notifications for, to the people who need to know that, you know, something about this student, you know, has changed, and, and we need to know about it. You know, it could be something like, you know, "Hey, this kid now has an allergy, and we need to notify the nurse that this, you know, this student now has an allergy." Or maybe we need to notify the teachers that this student has an allergy, because, you know, it's a food allergy or something along those lines. You know, various things like that, to automate some of those notifications and such, so we're not depending upon the, the staff to go in and, you know, see it. Let's see, what else do we have? We have revising the course catalog. So, the high school course catalog has seen many, many, many changes over the years. But we're actually looking at a, working with the high school to kind of revamp the whole thing, because we have actually reached a point where we're, we've run out of, or we're soon to run out of course numbers, which means we wouldn't be able to add any more courses. The, the smart way around that is actually to go back to the drawing board, because we know we have a lot of courses that we, that are in there in that course catalog that need to be retired. So, we're looking to actually do a total revamp of it, pull all those old courses, retired courses out, redo the numbering system to allow for more expansion, and then add in the courses again with the new numbering system. So, it'll be a rather, rather large project to get that one done, but it'll be a lot, lot better for the future, so. And then we're also looking, so we've been using online registration with Infinite Campus for a couple of years, and it seems to work fairly well for, for new students, but the amount of the information or the way that we're, we're recording this information from returning students, we've noticed that it's not as smooth as we would like it to be. So, we're looking at really kind of revamping that and making it easier for, for parents to input the information and get, get just what we need. Training, one of the things we continue to do is, we've been, for the last couple of years, we're, we've been doing cyberhoot, cybersecurity training. I think this is our third year, I want to say it with it. And we've actually had, as we get more and more into it, we've had more positive response from folks who take the training. I know I've had plenty of people come to my office and say, "Hey, I saw this email come in, it looked fishy to me. Because I took that cybersecurity training, I know exactly that, you know, this is a fishy one, and I shouldn't be clicking on it." Or, "Hey, I got this email from somebody who, you know, it looks like a social engineering trick. They're really trying to get some information from me. What's going on?" And we've been able to stop, you know, a few malicious attempts, because people have had that training, so it's been, been very positive.
Can you talk, just a little bit about what that, how does that work for staff members? What actually happens?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Are they in the loop? Are they getting it?
The?
School board members?
School board members, no. School board members do not, do not get it.
Well, it's a graded exercise, so I think that could be, you know. We don't want to create any undue tension, but, sorry. Go ahead. Talk about that.
So, yeah, so Cyberhoot Security Training. So, it's, it comes in the format of basically an email with a link to a short video. They're usually five, maybe 10 minutes at the most. And it's once a month, and it's a video specifically geared towards, you know, one topic. It might be spear phishing, you know, which is a phishing attack focused on, on one particular individual, usually a high-value type of person, like a business administrator. Or it might be something like smishing, which is actually a phishing attempt over SMS, a text phishing attempt on your phone. Or it might be, you know, any of, well, those sorts of things. It might be how to, how to be careful and be secure if you're out and about and you use, you see a public available wireless. Do you connect to it? Do you not connect it? What, what sort of risks are you running? So, it's short little videos like that, and then after you listen to the whole video and all that sort of thing, there is a brief quiz at the end that just kind of highlights what was talked about in the video and gives you a chance to really think about and process, you know, what was in the video. They're not, you know, tremendously difficult quizzes or anything like that.
And I can take it a second time.
And you can take it a second time if you, if you clicked on the wrong answer. But, but it is, it is really, you know, gets you to think about these security things. And quite frankly, we've had some people who have been very happy to take them, to be aware of some of the things that, that you might see at home as well. It's not just at school, you know, or at work.
You get those.
You might see it at home, exactly.
I get a bunch of that crap.
Yeah.
So, are you saying our business administrator is a security risk? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I, what I am saying, though, no, but the spear phishing, they specifically will go after business administrator, because, hey, he's got all the money, you know?
They'll go to somebody like an accounts payable, you know, and they'll say, "Hey," they'll find, figure out the name of the person.
Send a fake invoice.
At least one of these, right?
Yeah, we've been hit multiple times. And so has payroll. Payroll gets hit with, "I'm changing my direct deposit account, send it to this bank account now."
Yep.
And we had, a year back, a year and a half back, we had a, a spate of those, like it was several of them, and they had to create new process to make sure that they speak personally.
And I think we, I think.
We just got hit.
We had one, I know I had one before where I had, an email came from me to accounts payable.
Yep.
Saying, "Hey, cut me a check for blah, blah, blah." And it was, you know, Zach McLaughlin, you know, whatever. But you had to look, you had to dig behind to see the email was from Zach McLaughlin at.
PayPal.
PayPal, whatever, you know. So, and luckily, the person in accounts payable caught it. But it looked like, if you were moving along quickly and you're trying to respond to the boss, it looked like something you should go ahead and do. And so, and so those are not infrequent now, and so it's not just like ransomware attacks we've got to worry about. It's those types of things as well.
The delivery method, the tool, is really cool.
It is cool.
Mr. Lynch, Ken's using that now with his staff to do safety training. So, the same way, there's a video about ladder safety, about lifting and so on and so forth, and a little quiz. And then there's a data set, so it kicks back so that, in his case, he's keeping track that everybody has participated and everybody has looped back through enough times, à la Nathan, until they get it right and can pass the quiz with a passing score. Anyway, I didn't mean to take us off course, but that's a, it's a neat, it's a neat tool that we've made pretty good use of.
Is it required? Does this require training? Yeah, we, I mean, we chase, right? I mean, it automatically, I know I get my, "Zach, why the heck didn't you finish?" Actually, I remember George, I had to reach out to George after I'd been hired, but I wasn't working here yet, and I was already getting nasty grams from Cyberhoot.
Dunning messages.
Saying, what, and with, "Hey, George, can you, can you talk to this clown and make sure he does his training?" So, and I was still driving around Vermont, and it was, so, right? I mean, the system does generate.
It does, yeah. It does generate a report, and then, and then supervisors have to.
Have to chase a little bit.
Chase a little bit, yeah. All right. So, now let's get into hardware and infrastructure. So, this year, our big deployments of equipment, the high school one-to-one program, we issued the freshmen some new Chromebooks, as we do on a yearly basis. And we issued the middle school, sorry, the sixth graders, sixth, seventh, eighth, yeah, some new Chromebooks as well. We're in a rotation cycle with them, both at the high school and the middle school, so that we, we issue them a Chromebook as they come in, they keep it for the, either three or four years, depending upon high school or middle school or high school. And then, once they're, they've completed that, then we, we take those Chromebooks. And actually, we're, we're just to the point this year where the Chromebooks that we've sent through the cycle are new enough now that we're going to be able to take them and rotate them down into the elementary schools and get another year or two out of them at the elementary schools. It's been a while getting to this point with Chromebooks, but we're finally there. The other big deployment was the middle school teacher laptops, which we, they all got new laptops this year. And then, since I know we've had questions about this, we've been deploying some of the interactive panels, the Promethean Active panels as they come in. And we'll talk a little bit later about that with the, how they're paid for and all that sort of thing. They're not in the, in the IT budget, but I wanted to put it on here as something that we, you know, we are involved with definitely as, as they get deployed.
I don't know if this is a question for you, or, but is like the one-to-one providing everyone, is that like kind of a best practice now, or?
It's, yes, doing one-to-one programs is fairly standard across the state now.
It's pretty ubiquitous at this point.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, and it, it tends to, I guess, I would say it's, it focuses primarily across the state at the middle school and high school level. I would say almost, most districts have that. It varies by district whether, how far into the elementary they, they will go. We actually, in Portsmouth, we've kind of had some conversations along those lines and really kind of decided that we, as a district, we find that trying to get technology, especially a Chromebook into every student's hands way down to, you know, kindergarten or first grade level, is really kind of counterproductive. We have them available in carts for them to use. We have some iPads available for, for them to use as well, but really using it, having one assigned to you and using it on a day-to-day basis, hasn't been that productive. So, we're really seeing more at the elementary levels, the majority of the Chromebook usage at the three-to-five level. at the three-to-five level. So, let's talk budget. So, not surprisingly, most of this budget here for FY23 reflects what you saw on the last slide. We did obviously have the middle school classroom, the laptops in our budget. We basically put the, the high school one-to-one and the middle school one-to-one initiative, those Chromebooks, in the budget originally, but shifted them to, to be paid for with the federal funds, the ESAR funds, if I'm calling that correctly. I always get the, the acronyms mixed up as to which is which, but I believe ESAR is the right term. And then for FY24, which we're talking about now, our major deployment is going to be the elementary classrooms, so the, the MacBooks for the, the elementary teachers and such. And then, of course, the PHS one-to-one initiative and the middle school one-to-one initiative. We're looking to, since we have one more year of ESAR that we can do, where we can use that for, we're, we're going to go ahead and shift that over as well. However, if I remember correctly, this is our, FY24 is our last year that we can shift the funds over to ESAR?
Depending on, depending on how we spend the remaining dollars, the deadline for spending on the funds is the end of September of '24, which means the '25 fiscal year, we could spend in the summer out of any remaining dollars, but that will be the end.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's just, just an awareness thing that, you know, we have this ongoing one-to-one program and, you know, we've been, it's been great so far that we've been able to find funds, funding elsewhere, but, you know, in the upcoming fiscal years, eventually we're going to have to put it into the budget and, and, and support it in order to keep going.
Sort of put dollars on that. This is, folks aren't necessarily looking at their budget books right now, but these two together are an ongoing annual effort, bringing in new, new devices at the freshman year, bringing in new devices into the middle school and/or a rotation that also feeds back into the elementary.
Correct.
But, both of these, which are 75-ish and 50,000-ish, so it's about 125,000.
So, 125,000.
125,000 combined. These have not hit our local budget the last couple of cycles, but as we run out of ESAR funds, we've got to find a way back in because these aren't one-time hits.
This is a, yeah.
They are three-year cycles of leasing. This is, every year we spend these dollars to buy another set to start a three or four year cycle. Okay, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep, that's correct.
So, that's a future budget concern, maybe for '25 in whole or in part, but certainly for '26, this would have to come back in.
What, what percent right now, I'm trying to think how to phrase the question, what percent of this, the ones that we have in this three-to-four cycle right now are on their way out?
Um, the ones that we currently have at the high school and middle school, as we replace them this year, we will have, I believe, I have to look it up again, but I believe it's two years left of OS updates, Chrome OS updates, essentially. Every Chromebook, when you buy it, it has an end of life when it will no longer ever, end of update is, I think is what Google calls it, when it will no longer get any updates. So, you, you end up having Chromebooks that become security risks and all that sort of thing. So, I believe the ones we have now are two more years of life. It might be, yeah, I think it's two.
I just was curious how that aligned with the budget cycle as well.
Yep, yeah, so, and, and truthfully, some of these Chromebooks do get kind of beat up, so even when we get to the end of this year, we'll be taking all the ones back from the-
Elementary guys.
From the seniors and from the-
Yes.
Eighth graders, and we'll be going through them, and not all of them are going to make it.
And just to make sure I was clear too, because I have seen this, but, so 75, the freshman set that comes in, about 75 grand?
It's about 75,000, yeah.
About 75 grand, and then, and then the sixth grade group-
Is about 50, 50,000, yeah.
And then, you go all the way through middle school with the same machine, you hit the high school, you go all the way through high school with the machine you receive in the ninth grade.
And the lowest, and the earliest grades were rolling back.
And then, as you come out of the cycle, the middle school, what, things that are still in decent shape are rotated back to the earlier grades.
Capital Improvement Plan, so we have a couple of things in Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, that's with the city. This year, we're focusing on network switches and some wireless upgrades. Next year, we, we put in already, because we had to submit it, the more wireless upgrades. We have several more buildings we have to go through to, to get completely upgraded. And then, I, and I apologize for the acronyms, but a VSAN server upgrade, that's a VMware, or a virtual storage area network is what that stands for. Essentially, that's the, the box upon which our, all of our virtual servers live. And we have, we have several of them basically in a cluster, and then we, the idea is we keep on adding another node every year or every couple of years, and then we start retiring the old nodes, so we keep on refreshing and moving forward.
Zach, were there guys?
All right. I know we had some questions about the replacement cycle overall, so I wanted to throw in a couple of slides here to kind of highlight how we, what we have currently for a replacement cycle. We, our goal is to replace all of the equipment that is, that we have in people's hands every five years. You know, industry standard, quite frankly, is usually three years, maybe four years. We can't do that, we can't afford it. But, five years is actually a fairly reasonable time for, for a machine. So, you can jump into this at any point. I'm calling this year one because we happen to be at the elementary classrooms, so we'll call it year one. We're looking at the elementary classrooms, oh, and possibly food services, but I, I forgot to take that one out until later on because we're talking about that somewhere else.
That's okay. She can afford it this year.
There you go. Well, that'll be good. And then, of course, our, our one-to-one program at the high school and, and, and middle school. Year two, so next fiscal year after this, we'll be talking about the middle school labs. We have several of those that will be part of the process, and again, one-to-one. I'm sure you'll sense a theme there. Year three, it would be the high school RJLA and PEEP classrooms, so the teacher laptops are, are devices at that point, and then, of course, one-to-one. Year four, we cycle back to the high school labs now, as opposed to the middle school labs, one-to-one. And then, year five, we will hit up the middle school classroom devices and one-to-one. So, we have this five-year rotation where we're hitting everybody up in the, in the process. There are a couple of other, you know, oddball little groups and such that get tagged on to one or the other of these, the ones that do seasons things, but that's the general idea of what our cycle looks like. And I think that, yeah, that's the end of my slides here, so.
Just going to say really quickly that, you know, Tom and I have talked about this, and it's, you know, when you think about IT, it's, it's, you know, IT very often is like referees at a football game. If you're talking about IT, sometimes that's, you know, if you're talking about the referees, it's not a good sign. Everything, you know, and IT's very often the same way, it's in the background, it, it makes everything kind of move the way we want it to move. It also, you know, they do it on a reasonably small staff. There's a ton of users, a ton of devices that we're running, ton of software, lots of databases, lots of, you know, lots of hardware, it's not a huge staff. And when things break down, like in any organization, but in ours, it's definitely to the point where you, it's like, we come to a standstill. If something, you know, if things, if, if we have a problem with like printer software, I, you know, the phones are ringing off the hook from buildings with teachers not able to do what they're supposed to do, or if we have some type of, you know, whatever it is, when those issues arise, you realize how absolutely intertwined this department is with everything that we do. So, I appreciate Tom and, and the work that the department does, and also know that, you know, as, as time goes on, we'll continue to be creative about the way in which we manage things, and we'll also, you know, there may be conversations we need to have about staff as we move into the future as well, so.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have questions from the board? Lisa, do you want to go first?
I have one question, as we're sort of thinking about hopefully not another pandemic situation, but the possibility that maybe in the future, we might need to be prepared to more rely more heavily on technology than we might have anticipated. Do you feel like you have what you need? I mean, I guess I'm just curious as we're thinking ahead about ESAR and the budget. Will this replacement cycle and all the other upgrades that you're doing sort of put you in a good position, do you think, if we suddenly had to really be doing all of our education over technology again?
Um, the answer to that, I think, is yes.
I know it's like a complicated, we don't know until we're there, but-
If, if we were to, if we were to end up in the same, same situation than we were in March 2020, we would actually be in better shape now than we were then. We, we scrambled quickly, we, we had, luckily, we had already started the one-to-one program at the high school.
Yeah.
And we had pretty decent numbers in some of the other buildings. So, between those and the number of people who had technology at home, who, you know, opted to do that, we made out okay. Now that we're at fully one-to-one at the high school and middle school, we're in so much better shape. We also have, you know, a decent number of, of Chromebooks at the, at the elementary level as well. So, we would, we would not be relying as heavily on people having technology at home, I think, is where we would be. So, I, I think we'd actually be pretty decent.
Thank you.
Sure.
Carrie?
Um, just thinking about, so it looks like the, like instructional tech is within each school budget?
Yes, I was, I mean, it's worth saying that, that IT gets involved at some level in software decisions, just to ensure that, you know, things work in the production environment and that this install doesn't conflict with some other operating element of, you know, on the network. But, right now, a lot of our subscriptions, a lot of our solutions are moving to cloud-based models, and so, that's not, that's not as significant an issue as it once was. I think the conversation about Prometheans, about, you know, active panels and, and that kind of teaching tool, those are-
[phone rings]
Those are building-based. And, and again, some of the software things are building-based as they make decisions, grade level specific, et cetera, how to move.
Well, I will, I'll say that, and we've had some conversation about, about this, Patty and I and Tom, I came from an environment where that was concerning, because the problem is if buildings are making individual choices about what they're doing, and they're not consulting IT, then you're in such, IT needs to service things that they may or may not be in a position to service. And that could be in terms of hardware, that could be connected to software. So, I know we had developed over time, we had slowly moved from those types of items appearing in building-based budgets to it becoming more and more centralized, where buildings would make requests, but we had kind of a district-level tech advisory council that was composed of the director of technology, myself, a tech-savvy principal or two and a, and a staff member, and we would screen tech purchases as people, or tech requests around things that we would purchase, so that IT wasn't in a situation where they would have to necessarily pick up the ball on, on something that they, they might look at and be like, this is the wrong technology to, to really-
Yeah.
This is not, if you had additional expertise, you wouldn't make this type of choice. And, so, we've had some dialogue about maybe the need to, in the future, start to look more like that type of model, just in terms of if we are going to ask, you know, IT to operate on a, on this small staff is what they have right now, then that's really dependent upon, you know, we have to be thoughtful about what we're purchasing, how we're doing it, and it can't be willy-nilly. And that's not to say that it is, but, but it needs to be more centralized maybe than it is right now.
So, move. Oh, wait a minute.
And-
Sorry, it's not my role.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes total sense and clarifies some of the issues and the questions that have come up about the boards itself. And I think, you know, as it comes to like the equity question of what's in one place or how people fit or prioritize things in their budget, I think that's really important. I mean, it does sound like more work on IT, but, I mean, I think to, um, in the, so, one of the things that, that we had to do in employing stuff in like a hospital or healthcare setting, is IT had to, not IT, anyway, whoever it was, had to actually look at any device that was Wi-Fi enabled because they were very concerned about-
Privacy.
Privacy attack. So, if I order something for my classroom that actually has some sort of device or is not vetted or things like that, and so I think those things are, anyway, I've, it sounds like an important thing to move towards and will also help us answer some of the questions around equity and making sure that there's kind of standards. I mean, and I think, I think that's part of, I guess, I guess I, seeing, for instance, it going to, we want to see all fifth grade classrooms, science classrooms have Promethean boards, or whatever that is across the board, it, when it becomes a common teaching tool like the Chromebooks do, like, and, and having rollouts in that strategic way as opposed to like when we know people are going to use them.
So, so like logically, we, like, we would look at, for example, if it was, you know, the, the third, fourth, and fifth grade at Dundero, it's all one-to-one, but only the fifth graders at New Franklin. You know, we'd look at that and be like, that's a problem, like, why, we're not doing that, you know? And, and so I think we're getting, it's, it's a little less glaring when you go like a, a board that's in a classroom, but it's, but not that much more. I mean, again, I think you guys heard me talk about this at a different meeting, where it's like, if it's a core instructional technology, then we, I agree with you, I mean, we should have a kind of a systemic way of thinking about where those things are necessary and rolling those out in a, in a way that's reflective of a logic. And, and right now, through, through both the way in which we make some of those, those decisions at the building level, nobody with ill intent about the way, how people prioritize some of that, some of, how they're going to spend their funds, and we talked about also exterior groups contributing money for the, for the purpose of, of purchasing things, that leads to some inequity. So, there's, so, so it's a little bit complicated, and we talked about that in relation to making sure we don't want to dissuade people from, from, from contributing stuff to the schools. At the same time, we want to make sure we, we do it in a way that's fair and sound.
Brian?
I just had a question about the staff size for IT. You talked about maybe in the future, not, not this budget, but, you know, how, how big is the staff and what does it look like for mix?
So, we have, yeah, good question. So, we have myself, I'm the IT manager slash network administrator. We have two, a system administrator and an assistant. We have a database administrator, and then we have three technicians, so, to cover all the, all the buildings. One of the areas that we're actually struggling the most, quite frankly, is actually in the database side of things, because Mike Parr is our database administrator, and he is, he's running himself silly with, or ragged, I guess I should say, with all of the projects that we've been doing to kind of expand our use of data and, you know, what we do with it, how we, how we, you know, upgrade things like the, hey, we want to do a new course catalog. All of those things take, take time to set up, you know, to make sure that it works properly for everybody, because of course, the course catalog feeds all those courses, feeds all the master schedule, feeds, you know, everything from there to, down to the students. So, it's, it's got to be, you know, done correctly. So, as we try and do more and more of these tasks, we're finding that that's, that's kind of the focus in the area that we're most likely going to need to expand.
And I would just say too, that as we, when we, you know, in our, anybody, leadership positions or people who are in different roles, when we start to look at like, oh, we'll bring on such and such a platform, and it will all talk to the other platform, and it sounds like magic time, right? It's all, it's all, oh, it's, it's great, we're just going to plug it in and go, and the reality is, there's a ton of- And the reality is, there's a ton of database work in order to make that all work. And then it will break down and then you gotta, you know, and it's a labor-intensive kind of work. And I think we, and Tom had in one of the positions that we had talked about that was, that was asked for and not, we didn't initially bring to you, was, was another database person that was in this, so. So if not in this cycle, I think you can anticipate in the future cycle, we'd be coming back looking for someone to assist in that, in that way.
How much would that be approximately?
Dare I say, it's on your green sheet.
On the green sheet.
I don't want to refer back to that, but it was, it's a hundred thousand anyway, I mean, with taxes.
When you get into total compensation.
Total comp.
Cope?
I had two questions, one of them Brian asked, so thanks for that. But I, I am curious with your staff being so small, are there things that we're having to outsource right now? Or is everything happening in-house?
I would say that in the, in the traditional sense of outsourcing, no. Everything is happening in-house. That's not to say that we don't rely heavily on some of our vendors for things. You know, for example, our Canon copier and the rollout and the, the software that they support and all that. We're relying heavily upon them to, you know, to do the fixes and to do the, the support for it. But in the traditional sense of outsourcing, no, we don't.
Contracting out.
Yeah.
And then my other question was around support because there was a lot of support needed during the pandemic.
Yes.
And there was a lot of training that was happening as maybe even students training teachers at times.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking about a presentation George did before you guys came into the district about, it was still a significant percent, I don't remember the exact number, but still a significant percent of staff that needed that training. And I was just wondering, do you know where we are with staff's comfort level now with the technology that's being used in-house and the remote systems and, and where do you see the most support being?
I think that, I think it's something we still need to focus on, but I think it is, I think the first step in that process is where we, we need to solidify, much like we were talking about before. We need to kind of solidify what tools, especially online tools, we're really using so we can focus our training on those pieces. You know, and, and preferably, you know, narrow down the, the number of tools. So if we have two tools that are very similar, we can say, oh, well, you know, we like this one better than this one. You know, let's, let's all consolidate down to one. We have, certainly we've talked about specific trainings. I know Patty and I have had some conversations with the trainers from Promethean. Now that we're getting all these, you know, newer boards and we're, we're actually about, I believe I looked it up, we're somewhere around 60% of the way through upgrading the older style projector and whiteboard to the TV-style interactive panel. But they can do more. And really, in order to make full use of, I mean, yes, you can plug in and go from day one and, and have at it, which is great. But in order to really use all those extra features, we've got to get that, that Promethean trainer, you know, online at a time when we can have everybody get together and, and, you know, learn some more. So those are the types of things that we're really, you know, that we, that we need to focus on, I do believe. Sure.
Pip and then Carrie.
I was interested to hear you talk about the, centralizing the storage of file storage. And I'm, I know that was sort of a, an issue during remote learning where, where each teacher was familiar with one system or another and it kind of really threw parents off when they were having to help multiple kids in their family. So, but I'm curious how, what the staff response is to that. And is it something that's being required or is, are you just starting it as sort of an optional switch or how's that going?
Well, a couple of things there. One is that I think since being in the midst of that chaos and everything like that, our staff has become more comfortable with, with Google Classroom in particular and has started to use that more as a centralized location for being able to interact with, with the students and get the, get everything back and forth. So I think that, that piece has definitely advanced. As far as the actual storage location, trying to get everything to Google Drive so that, of course, it can be shared out through Classroom and all that. It's been a, it's been somewhat of a mix. It's, it's a little bit more of a, not a mandated move just yet. Because we're still trying to get people familiar with how it works. And there are many, many different ways that you can set up, like Google Shared Drives and things. So we want to make sure that we kind of pilot them and, and work out some of those kinks so that we understand what the best way of doing it is and then make it easier for, for folks to use and move everything over. We have different structures too as well, based on the way that classroom teachers work and how they share amongst themselves and how they share out with students versus kind of the backend administration of, of the buildings and of central office and all that. So they're, they're different structures. And so we've been working out some of the, the, the design, if you will, of, of those to make sure that, you know, what structures we give to, to classroom teachers is really going to work for them. And not force them into something that you would use on the, on the, in the office end and vice versa. So it's still, it's still optional at this point, but we're going to move there.
Carrie?
Liz Barrett had to sign off, I guess, for something, but she texted me a question and she said she would look at the YouTube later for the response, if that's all right.
Okay.
My question is about security. How are we protecting student data? Is Google appropriate for storing protected student information? Do we need to invest more money in security? And also, do students get the same cybersecurity training?
All really good questions. So what are we doing for student security? First of all, you know, as I'm sure many of you are aware, a couple of years back, the legislature passed HB 1612, which basically set into emotional law that said, we have to really pay attention to student data privacy and all that sort of thing, which we do. One of the things that we do in order to protect the data privacy is, as we were discussing earlier, the various online tools and software that we use throughout the district. Every, we lump them all together and call them digital tools, but every digital tool that we use in this district is supposed to go through a vetting process. Which means that everything that anybody is using anywhere in the district, the IT department should know about. And we take it through a, a vetting process. We work with our New Hampshire Data Privacy Consortium to essentially vet all of those, you know, companies and all that sort of thing, many of which we have a data privacy agreement signed with, you know, it's not just with us, it's with the whole state. And as a matter of fact, now it's, it's like a New England consortium that they can sign. So it's really to the vendor's best interest to go ahead and sign these things. So, so we do that to, to make sure that whatever tools we use, the, the, the student's data is protected. As far as Google is concerned, it's been run through the consortium as well. I, I will say, you know, Google's a very, very large company and they tend not to want to sign individual agreements. However, the lawyers went through everything with a fine-tooth comb to say, okay, yes, Google Workspace for Education is in fact a secure place for the student data to reside. We, one of the reasons that we wanted to go to the single sign-on is actually to be more secure with the, with the student data and make it harder for somebody to connect up. We, for example, with Google, we provide, set in place additional measures. So by default, you cannot, no one can sign into a, a Google account in our domain outside of the United States. So that prevents all of the many people that we can see trying to just blast away and hit up these, these accounts from, you know, I don't know, Russia and Nigeria and wherever else in the world. We actually do see those, those attacks happening. That obviously creates issues because sometimes people do travel abroad, so we have to, you know, have them contact us to let us know, okay, I'm going to be out of the country, so I need to actually be able to access it to remotely. But as a default, we, we block that access. So the, the Google Workspace and Google Drive as a, as a storage location is actually a fairly safe location for their data to reside. Did I answer all the questions?
I think there's one more. Oh, cybersecurity training for students.
Oh, we don't actually do cybersecurity training for students. We do, we do a digital citizenship training at several different levels. I believe in each one of the, the levels, like in elementary and then again at middle school and then again at, at high school. The students do get, and maybe you can speak to this actually, do get some digital citizenship training as they go through. There's a little bit of cybersecurity, you know, probably more at the advanced levels. Certainly if you take a class, like the programming class at, at the high school, you're going to get a little bit more cybersecurity training. But that's not every student. We actually had a conversation with Cyberhood about expanding this to all students. And it is a possibility that we could do that. They actually have some modules that are more geared towards students. But of course, there's a cost associated with it. And it was, when we talked about it before, it was fairly substantial and we weren't ready to, to move to that yet. But it might be something we want to reconsider.
Any other questions from anyone? Yes?
To speak to the student side, my experience has been that, yeah, any cybersecurity training is pretty minimal. We, we learn how to use computers a little bit in elementary school and then later, or in my experience, I'm sure it's actually moved back quite a bit now, and then mainly in middle school. But I, yeah, I think generally it's like pretty much everything you do in, in school is on school accounts anyway. So a lot of things that, as I understand, it would otherwise be pretty shady, tend to just get blocked out anyway. So there aren't a lot of chances to encounter things where you would need that training to begin with.
The Google spam filter is actually pretty good.
I have a question about phones. Do, do students use their phones to get the internet when they're in school? Are they allowed to do that? Or, I mean, does that help with the inventory of the, you know, who has a tablet, who doesn't? Because you can look something up on your phone?
I'm sure, I'm sure they do use them. I think it varies by, from classroom to classroom. I think there, there certainly are more classrooms, I believe, where the, the teachers say, no, put your phone away because you have a Chromebook, you know, use the Chromebook to, to look things up. You know, but as a district-wide, we don't ban phones or encourage phones either way. We're kind of ambiguous to them, ambivalent to them. The, I mean, certainly it's, it can be a useful, useful tool, but it's, you know, more for the quick answer than, than really the detailed answer. And, you know, we're not counting on the people having phones as far as not purchasing devices, if you will. We want to make sure that we have, everybody has a device and they're available and all that sort of thing. We don't want to count on, on the student, you know, having a phone or not having a phone.
And I remember a few years ago, we talked about the copiers. And we lease those, correct? Did we have a conversation about the possibility of us potentially buying the copying machines? Or was that, maybe, maybe I had, maybe I'm not remembering. That was going back a few years.
Yeah, I was going to say, we've had, we've, I've been new to Portsmouth three years, but historically, we've done that in the past. And the challenge now is, he was talking about Google and Google Chrome and life, life cycle of updates. Everything today has, has some short life and it definitely has useful life. And what we found is, the reality of the market continues to be that at the end of a five-year lease with a, with a, with a big copier with a multi-function device, they may still take that and deliver it to the guy next door and do so at a, a small price because it still has some life and some legs. But we have negotiated fair enough deals right now. And we've done a good job of consolidating down onto these big multi-function machines where the click rate, the per, per, per image price is so small. And we've gotten rid of the majority of the convenience printers that are far more expensive per image. We consolidated back that right now, this leasing tool, this leasing arrangement really works because we don't own it, we don't end up with it in year eight or 10 and our, our support costs are all built in, our maintenance costs are all built into that click rate. So it's, there are purists or idealists among us who would like to see us now, we have Chromebooks go paperless and do very little imaging. But as the accountant upstairs in the business office, I'm all about paper and you all know it. So there will always be some place for paper. But I think we've done a pretty good job. And the staff are not always excited about reducing their, their paper consumption and their imaging. But I think they have been agreeable over the course of the years, doing less and less printing, asking students less and less to output that and put a staple in it and hand it back to me instead of simply uploading it through the, the internet-based device and.
So we've seen savings over the years because less paper is being used?
Absolutely. And I think the, the hard part, right now, I think we're still in a, in a give and take mode. So Tom suggested that we put more color out. So we took the savings and we reinvested it and as we got, we brought ourselves back to fewer devices, we put color on more of those devices so that we have greater functionality out there. That costs a little more than black and whites. We certainly could have cut our costs by reducing the devices and going just black and white with more of them. We put more color out into the field to make it more flexible so that people have, people give, give people a reason to walk down the hall to that device and be comfortable with the fact that they had to walk down the hall instead of reaching behind them on the desk. And when they get there, they can get color now where they never could, they'd had to go downstairs or something. So right now, we've reinvested our savings into making sure that we have better equipment and we're serving greater need. I think eventually though, we're going to hit a point where, you know, we really can start to just shave off and shave off. We have a couple of heavy hitters in the district and we're still chasing, why are we doing as much imaging in that building or in that, you know, in that hallway? And they're doing a nice job in IT trying to respectfully but firmly chase that down and, and offer up new solutions. So we're getting there.
And I just have a question about the, the new student handbook that we're in the process of putting together at the high school. Do you get involved with that in helping to design it and put it online and?
I really don't. I, no, I really don't. It's, honestly, there's, there's a lot of things that, that people are, you know, we, we give them the technology and they run with it, you know? Which is great, you know, they're using it and, and that's what we like to see.
My last question before we go to Carrie. You must be aware of grants that might be out there or state money or obviously we have ESSAR funds. I mean, does that kind of money exist to buy, you know, Chromebooks and all that stuff for our kids or?
Yes, from time to time. One of the things that I, I always get asked is, for example, E-Rate funding, which is, you know, a great source of funding out there. But because of our demographics, we usually, we qualify for the E-Rate 1, but not E-Rate 2. And E-Rate 2 is really the one that, that goes more towards the equipment, yeah. So, I mean, there are some out there. I will say that, that the, I would not recommend going for, necessarily for grants for things that we know that we're going to need consistently, such as the, the one-to-one Chromebooks. Because, you know, it's, that's a short-term fix, but we definitely need to have a long-term fix. definitely need to have a long-term fix for funding those. You know, the grants are good for, you know, the one-offs, or hey, let's try this and see if it works type of a thing, but, you know, unfortunately, it's not as good for, obviously, a long-term type of a thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Carrie, did you have, Carrie and Hope?
Just as all the places go to two-factor authentication, is that something we would have to do? And I know at UNH, or at University System of New Hampshire, there was lots of concerns about equity within that, in this sort of how to do that with people that don't have another device, or things like that. And so, I'm just curious if our systems would need to go that direction, and if they do, do we need to plan ahead financially for some options?
That's a good question. One thing that we, we actually, our goal with two-factor authentication, yes, I think we need to start moving that direction, I think our goal is more, and our focus is going to be initially on staff, and, you know, kind of getting all the staff, you know, familiar with and comfortable with doing it, and then kind of working our way down to students. Realistically, you know, at a high school level, we're probably, we would probably be okay, because, I mean, a lot of, a lot of students have a phone, so if we needed to go two-factor there, we would have a smaller number of students that we would need to come up with an alternative solution. But there are, you know, devices, UV keys.
Tokens.
You can, you know, pre-print a whole bunch of codes that you can use, even from Google to use as a second factor, so there are ways around it that we could certainly make it work. I think when we get to that point, we're really going to have to take a good, hard look and take a good survey and find out, you know, what kind of numbers we're talking about, that we would need to support with an alternative.
Thanks.
Sure.
Hope?
Just real quick, my understanding from the PPTV program that used to, the course that used to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the TV program, yeah.
Yeah. We used to do a lot of, like, students were used through that program sometimes to make promotional videos, or stuff for athletic department, or training videos, and I'm just wondering, do we have equipment for things like that in the district anymore, or is it really using the resource of, like, the film internship partnerships that the CTE program has?
Well, the, yeah, the PPM-TV partnership and all that was, excuse me, was a, it is gone, it was a CTE program specifically, so that, that course is no longer available, which is a shame, because I think that was really a good, a good resource and a good course to have, it was a great opportunity for students. I'd love to see it come back, quite frankly. At this point, if we are in need of really videoing something, an event, or coming up with something promotional, Matt Toby over here is actually our go-to person, is the media technician, and he does have, you know, we have a little bit of equipment in the media program in that regard, but it's more, it's limited equipment, because we have limited staff, it's basically just him, you know, and/or any volunteers, like, for example, if we're, if we're going to video the production of the, in the theater, or something like that, you know, you might have one or two people involved in that. We have, that is something we have outsourced, though, on occasion, I know the last two years for graduation, we actually had a company come in and do the entire sound and video production for it, and it, you know, it really turned out well, you know, they had the right resources to put at it. So, for big events, I think it makes sense to kind of outsource that type of thing and do it professionally, but I would love to see that program come back and have opportunities for students.
Do we know what exactly instigated it no longer being available? Like, was it just that someone retired, or was, were the funds not there?
It was a combination of a couple of factors, but yeah, the, the partnership with PPM-TV kind of disintegrated due to personnel, lack of personnel type of a thing, and also, chicken and egg sort of thing, I don't know whether that happened first or not, but there was less interest in the, in the program, you know, and it might just have been, because it wasn't really available to do either, so.
Anyone else have a question, of Tom? Tom, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks a lot.
Once again, you enlightened us and updated us on what's going on in the district, so that's wonderful for us to have that, so thank you.
You're most welcome. Hopefully I answered all the questions.
And then, so.
Do you have anything else you want to say before we adjourn?
I don't think so, I think we're anticipating that, the next conversation is the ESER conversation, and diving into those positions and having an in-depth conversation about that.
And remember, if you have any questions, Zach has set up the Google Doc form, so, and we have the answers to some of those questions on this paper, so, yes.
For the sake of formality, would you just open up on a comment, in case there is any, because we added to the agenda, but we didn't do that earlier.
Oh, we did.
I think it's fine to do it now, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to miss the, I wouldn't want to miss that, I'm not sure you have to be formal about it, other than to just ask if there is any, and.
Well, I think we're supposed to have a motion to open up the public comment session. Do we have a motion?
Motion to enter into public comment.
Second. Lisa, second, Hope, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will now open up the session for a public comment, do we have anyone that would like to make a public comment of the school board? Do we have anyone in Zoom that would like to make a comment?
Going once, going twice.
Is there someone?
One person, but not.
Is that Margo?
Okay, all right, do we have a motion to close the public comment session?
I know we'll be close.
Anne, second, Hope, all in favor? I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was on the agenda.
No, sorry.
So our next meeting will concern ESER, and then that's the 7th of February, the 14th, we'll have a regular meeting with the public.
Open the public hearing one more time, yeah.
Open the public hearing for the second time, because you have to have two public hearings, and then we will adopt the budget on the 21st. I believe there is some leeway to that 21st deadline, am I correct about that?
Tell me, veteran.
So, I would tell you that the city manager and city finance office have asked that we deliver the budget to them on the 10th, as a part of their process, the 10th of February, and I have, like I have for the last three years, I've said, well, you understand, of course, we won't be done until the 21st, and so I think that if there was reasonably a concern, and we weren't ready or able, I could communicate that back to the city manager's office, but otherwise, they, they're moving ahead with collecting police and fire, and general government is building theirs now, as we speak, and I know that they're eager to work their magic and get ready to go to the council, so.
So, so we're okay with the 21st?
You're certainly okay with the 21st, if we weren't going to do it on the 21st, I'm going to wait until after vacation, I probably should go unbended knee up there and tell them what's up.
Yes, Carrie?
Do we have an interim, like, from our prior discussions, do we have something else, or are we still based on the purple only?
So, as of, our conversations, our dialogue hasn't come around to any change, there hasn't been any consensus or decision taken, or vote taken on making changes to what was initially proposed in your book, so the purple sheet is, yeah, the staffing changes that were.
Or, yeah, the white.
Correct, but the purple sheet's got the same date, and it spoke to the proposed staffing changes, there's a couple of adjustments up and a couple down that add to a negative point three four FTE, a third of an FTE reduction, but those, that's where we're working from right now. I've got more information on the, on the green sheet, you had values for the five positions that are in ESER, when we talk next time, I'll have those, I have them broken out, and I'd run the numbers on what fractions of them, you know, half of all five of them, what's that cost us in the budget in terms of dollars, that percentage, and what if we did all of them, and if there are other scenarios, I'll be ready to, I'll be ready to dodge, and we even come up with different numbers for you, if you like, because I know that that's part of next time's conversation.
And you said the position for technology's on the green sheet.
It's on the green sheet, yeah, on the back page, I think it might be the last one.
It's the last one.
He's 170, he's the end of the cost centers, and so that's, I did him in cost center order, I think, so, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Carrie, Hope, all in favor? Hey, everyone, Matt, once again, thank you.